Good evening. I call this July 27th, 2021, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council Order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website on July 29th. The video of this meeting will be uploaded to townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Our sergeant at arms this evening is Master Officer Strickland, who has 13 years law enforcement experience, 11 years with the Town of Morrisville. She has served on the crisis intervention team and has received Officer of the Year recognition several times. Thank you for your service and thank you for being here this evening. I now recognize Councilmember Rabadi for tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. As we begin our meeting this morning, this evening, we cast our eyes downward toward the foundation on which we build and from which we draw strength. We cast our eyes upward to see the greatness of which we are capable. We cast our eyes forward to see the endless possibilities of a limitless future for ourselves and our town. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that very much. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member want to share anything at this time? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion and second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I make a motion to re-adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. There are nine items on this evening's consent agenda: ordinance to extend Town of Morrisville corporate limits to include properties located along the south side of Stator Road; resolution approving the Wake County non-cash rebates; tax exemptions and penalties reports from September 2020 through May 2021; resolution designating an official to make recommendations to the NC Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission; resolution approving an amendment to the Cary-Morrisville Utility Agreement; the minutes from three June Town Council meetings; resolution approving authorizing the purchase of real property at 104 Markham Drive; and finally, a resolution authorizing purchase of real property at 109 Markham Drive. Do any council members wish to remove any of these items for discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda, or approve it, actually.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries 7-0 as well unanimously. We are now at public address. Town Clerk Smith, is anyone signed up to speak in person?
Yes, sir. We did have one individual sign up to speak in person, Mark Dixon.
Okay. Mr. Dixon, if you can approach the microphone, please share your name and address, including town. You will have three minutes. And there we go. Good to see you.
Nice to see you all without a mask. That's great. Mark Dixon, 1413 Everett Fields Road here in Morrisville. So, let's see. I'm not speaking on behalf of Alston Ridge Middle School, PTSA, which I'm leader, not speaking on behalf of the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, which I'm a member, not speaking on behalf of the Providence Place Neighborhood Board of Directors, which I'm a member of. I'm just speaking as a member. 20 seconds. Wow. Okay. So I'm just gonna tell you a little story to advocate for an amenity. So recently, I went to Michigan to visit family and we had just a short week before school started again. So I was really excited to go home. There's a disc golf course that's been there for like 35 years. I never even knew about it, right by my parents' house. So I went to play with my dad, who's about 85, and my kids. And we all played terribly, and as expected. So this is my like second timeout. And we had a really nice walk in the woods. It was really great. And so the next day, unbeknown to me, my nephew calls me and says, hey, I know you're in town. Do you want to play some disc golf? And he didn't know that we had played the previous day. So he's got a bunch of discs for what, 20 bucks apiece or something? So he had to mask these discs. We went to play in a neighboring town, Rain Tree Park. And again, my brother, his son, my nephew, Thomas Centura, we all had a great time. A nice walk in the park. So I was really, again, we all played terribly. I think I'm at about 100 feet now where I can throw a disc. But I just wanted to tell you that story. I spent the rest of the entire week in Michigan outdoors, biking, hiking. At Stony Creek Metro Park, you probably know of that. And so there was, I really want to advocate for a disc golf park or course at the Church Street Park that was previously proposed. I think that would be a great amenity and I'd love to have that kind of amenity so we can have a walk in the park with my friends or my kids. And so in addition to that, the Metro Park had sunk $500,000 into a mountain bike improvement plan. So I went there twice, once with a friend, once with my brother, had a great time. And so I got to thinking, like, so Morrisville is just like Shelby Township 30 years ago. And all these activities outdoor I get to do. And I'd really like to see the Town of Morrisville advocate for more of that. And I think there's, you know, thoughts around what we can do from a Parkinson Rec perspective. But the more you can throw at me, the more I'll enjoy being here, living well and living connected. And that does include the reversal of the sunset clause for the Wake Stone Corporation. There's something funny about how that happened, but I'm opposed to the new quarry expansion. And I'd like the Town of Morrisville to advocate for the same, to really make that part of Amstead State Park. Thank you for your time.
Just on time. Perfect. Was there anyone else signed up in advance, Town Clerk Smith? Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak who didn't sign up? Okay. Moving on to action items, which are item nine. Our first action item is consideration of zoning map amendments and UDO text amendments related to land use plan implementation in the Crimmins Area Extension Subarea Plan and the Transit Oriented Development District. Chris Lawson, planning manager, will present this item. And we are scheduled to vote on this this evening. Mr. Lawson?
Good evening, Council. Okay. So after the last meeting, I think there were two items that council had asked me to return and discuss some different options. And then during that time, staff had found two other items we wanted to propose, just small last-minute cleanup items. And then, as you said, you are scheduled to vote tonight. You should have been provided a script. There are five total actions that will be required. If you look at the bottom right-hand of the scripts, it'll say 1 out of 5, 2 out of 5, 3 out of 5. Hoping to keep you organized on that. So let me just go over some of the changes. And I'm really gonna start at the very bottom of my presentation and work my way back towards the front. So the first item that council had asked staff to think about was based on some public comments related to the definition of biomanufacturing. If you remember, staff had written a definition that was pretty narrow. And the council had received a few public hearing comments asking to broaden the definition to allow different types of uses. So what you see before you on your screen is what we have come up with. And we have actually worked with the two gentlemen who had written in the public hearing comments last time. So this is what we're proposing at this time. And since there's only four comments left, I think if you just want to work through each one or do you want me to come back at the end of my presentation?
Can we go through each one?
Sure. Sure. Any questions or comments specifically on this definition? I think we, as staff, still tried to allow a number of uses as long as the use is contained within the building, that it does not meet the definition of some of the other industrial uses we have, which include medium manufacturing or heavy manufacturing. And it's really aimed at a lot of the biomanufacturing that includes the life science uses. And tried to broaden it so that when a company came in that with a technology that maybe we're not familiar with, they can kind of write us a letter on how they use the property to make sure it complies with this definition.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I just want to make sure that where we talk about vaccines, now I can't find it. Okay. High-tech life science outputs, vaccines, medicines, or similar compounds. We're not talking about the widespread manufacture and distribution of those compounds. This would be vaccines, medicines, associated with research into those items, right?
So this definition would allow the manufacturing of these items. It would also allow the research associated with the development of those items. But this would allow the just pure manufacturing of those items.
Didn't we talk about the fact that we were trying to avoid like a big manufacturing plant with labs? And there was some discussion of air conditioners? So where did we, how does this reconcile?
Yeah. So we did talk about that and maybe this isn't as narrow as you like. But we have a part of it, a few sentences before that, says that "all manufacturing activities shall be contained entirely within the building." So no noise, odor, smoke, glare, heat, or vibrations. And that's in the attempt that if you drive past it, it looks mostly like an office building. Now, with any of the loading dock space, the other amendments also make it so the loading docks have to face away from residential, has to face away from major roads. And then we did talk a lot about the generators and other outside units. The UDO already requires those to be screened either by wall, if it's close to the building, or if it's out in a parking lot, some kind of landscape, evergreen landscaping.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
Okay. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add on to the question Councilmember Rabadi had about vaccines. I've had a long career in pharmaceutical research and also clinical trial supplies. When I worked in the clinical trial supplies department, we required small-scale manufacturing capability in order to provide clinical trial supplies worldwide. So from a single, small site, we manufactured vaccines, capsules, tablets, and packaged them for final dispensation to the clinical trial site. So I don't want to be so prescriptive that that activity could not occur because it technically is manufacturing. It's just not that major manufacturing for commercial products. And I don't even want to add the word "commercial" versus "research" because I think that might be overly prescriptive. But I do want to inform the council that that kind of activity is classified as manufacturing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no others on this item, we can move on to the next, please.
Okay.
I've got something.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I was just looking at your noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare. And I would be interested in adding pollution emissions to that. I'm not sure that like smoke and odor would cover that.
So I'd be fine if we wanted to get it even more specific. I would say that this definition comes from, that wording is exactly from the definition of light manufacturing. And that's why we added into this. And really, I think that first couple few words, "all manufacturing activities are contained entirely within a building", I think that's what as staff we're gonna look at mostly when a site plan comes in. But again, I'd be happy to add, you know, it's kind of a catch-all, but I'd be happy to add anything else that you'd feel more comfortable with being more specific.
Would the council support adding the word pollutants? Mayor, for ten?
So I, you know, I have no problem with that. But isn't it already, I think, Chris, what Chris just said kind of makes sense to me. The last part of that, "from the manufacturing activity are confined entirely within the building", that captures, doesn't that capture it? That kind of, I think captures it. It captures it. That means everything. Emissions, it means what, I mean, the pollutants would be the odor, the smoke.
Okay. I'll recognize Councilmember Rabadi and then circle back to Councilmember Fender.
Circling back to Councilmember Fender's point, I think that emissions, to me, would also cover things more like runoff waste or stormwater effects or environmental concerns. Pollutants, to me, would cover more of that kind of thing, which doesn't seem to me to be covered in the language.
Councilmember Fender?
Well, I think smoke doesn't necessarily include emissions that are released with the burning of fuel. You might not, I mean, you might not necessarily see smoke, but the pollutants are there. I would feel better if it included emissions or pollutant emissions.
Okay. I would think pollutant emissions, would that be more specific than just saying general pollutants? To get the waste runoff and things like that. Okay. So we have, not quite sure where we're on this one. Would anyone have an issue with just adding pollutants to the, kind of the laundry list? Do you think that that, does anyone feel like that weakens it or makes it less good? Okay. Sounds like we can just add pollutants into that list.
Yeah. After vibration, just add pollutants?
After which?
Just after, and vibration, just change it to vibration and pollutants?
Where do you think it would be best fitting, Councilmember Fender, since you brought that in?
After smoke.
After smoke, okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions or comments on this section? Okay. Hearing none, we can move on. Mr. Lawson, thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna jump around here and we'll get to the apartment spacing last. Okay. So one other thing I wanted to point out to you was the, so there's minimum and maximum setbacks. It was 15 to 20 feet as a minimum, minimum, maximum setback. We looked at this since last meeting and realized that's about the same width as your landscape buffer and figured it might be better to give the buildings about an extra five feet so the trees don't grow into them. So we upped it from a 15-foot minimum setback to a 20-foot minimum setback. And then the maximum setback's 30 feet. So I don't know if there's any thought on that. That was just, again, for a landscape buffer, we're gonna have additional plantings along the road just to give those trees extra five feet as they grow to away from the building.
Does staff feel that that might hinder businesses' ability to develop the entirety of the site? That kind of be?
No. I think we settled at five feet, thinking that, not knowing where the magic number would be, but that five feet was probably as minimal as needed. But that it would still, overall, the same, you know, all the stuff that's been talked about through the land use plan process for this area, for my text amendments here, it would accomplish the same feel. It just would give a little extra room for plant growth.
I've seen trees that overgrow their space. So I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Looking around for any other comments or questions on that item? Seeing none, I think we're all okay with that.
Okay. Let me jump back down to slide 20. So if you'll pay attention to the bottom of your slide, if you remember, through most of this process, we have been proposing that just multifamily developments should require additional tree preservation and plant, additional plantings along major roads. You know, through this process, thinking about, you know, treating different uses different ways, staff is currently proposing that we just make that a recommendation for every single type of development, just to keep consistently along the corridor. So that would not just be a multifamily development anymore, it'd be for any type of development. So 150% of the required tree preservation and 150% of the required street yard plantings. Any thoughts on that change? I didn't, any thoughts on that change? Okay.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, please.
I think that's a great idea to extend that to all development, not just the multifamily apartments.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of that.
I too would be in favor. I think we do enjoy our trees.
That was Director Stiegel's idea, so give credit where credit is due.
Seeing no other comments on that one, I think staff's idea is a good one. Thank you.
Okay. So the last one is back to the multifamily spacing. Really, I think where we all ended up last time was that just any multifamily development shall be with 1,500 feet at least away from a different multifamily development. 50% will be vertical mixed use along the major roads. And really, the point of discussion last time was about those developments which contain multifamily dwellings, but it's only on upper floors of vertically mixed-use developments. So we've got a few options in the black at the bottom of your screen, but currently, what I've just proposed is they can be closer than 1,500 feet, but no closer than 1,000. Now, the other options are, we can adjust that distance requirement to whatever number you're comfortable with. We can put a cap on the number of allowed units. This is probably staff's least favorite option, providing just a kind of an artificial cap on the number of units. Or just removal of option C entirely and just say, you know, we're gonna rely on that 1,500-foot minimum distance requirement. So...
So I imagine we're all gonna have some comments on this one. We've been doing a lot of discussion on this. So I'll start off with Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember myself.
I'd be in favor of removing option C entirely.
As would I. I'd like to remove option C because I think that our our ability to control the number of units really hinges on being really clear with the development community about what we're looking for. And that we do need some apartments in this area to make it vibrant and walkable. And I think an additional, the 1,500 feet meets our needs to do that. And anything more, I'm afraid that we might get more than we're bargaining for. So those are my thoughts on that. Looking, Councilmember Garamella, please.
I'm in favor of keeping option C. And as I had said before, it's not just multifamily. My whole goal is, like we did the 150% tree preservation, it should be for any dwelling that is coming there. You know, like have, like, option of lower, you know, like first floor, commercial, something like Fatal Street, they have offices, they could have apartments. But that whole goal of the coming to this macrame, it's been ages and ages. I cannot see the other option of 1,500 would do justice to the area. It is just not going to look vibrant. And for me, I think removing that is basically taking away a lot of retail, commercial areas because single-storied retail is very, very expensive in this area to be. And we don't want, we want best value of our tax. So having, not just saying multifamily, it's just any buildings should be able to do it. But at least we get that commercial retail in the first floor. So I'm all in favor of keeping that.
Okay. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Garamella makes some valid points. I really wanted this area to be mixed use. And if the buildings are all 1,500 feet apart and they have brewery or retail or entertainment, it's not possibly going to be the same effect as if they were a little closer together. So incentivizing that space with a mixed-use element is something I would like to see. We have to think about some balance, some give and take. And so if we are offering more buildings that are closer together, then we can have those residential-only units still 1,500 square feet apart. So that's the balance that we would get. If every building is that far apart, you might not get the same effect of having that vibrant center.
So just to clarify, Chris, Mr. Lawson, we can have other buildings in between the apartment buildings that can have retail on the first floor, correct?
But you just said all buildings would be 1,500 square, 1,500 apart. So whether they were residential or not.
Then I don't think I meant to promote that.
So this would be just for, so there'd be 1,500 feet between multifamily developments. And then number, letter C would be that, yeah, completely ground floor, commercial or otherwise. And then upper floors, multifamily, they could be within 1,000 feet of other multifamily developments. So it would just give a 500-foot reduction if you only provided multifamily on upper floors.
So I'll rephrase, but I still think that with a multifamily, mixed-use building, having them closer together creates a more vibrant atmosphere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Haven't heard from a couple of council members, but if they don't want to speak, I'll circle back again. Sorry, I can't see yours behind that. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Chris, if we removed option C, in your opinion, would it produce, to follow up on what Councilmember Garamella said, would it reduce the potential of having vertical mixed-use retail?
That is a tough question to answer. I will say that when we began this process, if you remember, I had proposed zero distance between, you know, these kind of developments, mostly for the aim of getting that vertical mixed use and some more of the mix of uses within the same building.
Okay. Because I think the concern here is, I can see the argument for removal of option C, but I'm concerned about if we did something like that, that, you know, we would minimize the ability to have that retail, which is in more of these kind of innovation districts. I know it's not what you probably want to hear, but I think the cap on number of allowed units would be, I mean, I think that would be, you know, for me, I think the concern of the council is we are getting concerns about too much, you know, reducing density of development. So if we have, I think we as a council have to take a look at making policies and our ordinances that would not allow a developer to come in and say, well, it's in the plan. You know, we don't really have any, you added the not closer than 1,000 feet, but, you know, developments which contain multifamily dwellings, you know, may be closer than 1,500 feet. And so that's really what's driving my concern, is that somebody can come back and say, well, we can do that and then we just get more apartments. So I think it's important for me to arrive at something that is addressing that concern. But I, so...
Well, if you don't mind, let me explain just why I said about the cap on number of units being the staff's least preferred. And it's mostly just because of the, you know, every development site and every development's slightly different. And just having a total cap is, it's hard to predict the ramifications of that. That has been, when I've talked to developers, that's been their least preferred option. However, I'll say that it is a cut and dry, when you look at the UDO, you cannot have more than this amount of units. And maybe when developers do come, they'll have to work around that number and provide that mixed use or provide some other kind of product.
I'm in favor of that then, because I think it clearly delineates. We're gonna reduce density, at least gives us an option of saying you can't have more than this.
So is that four cap?
In addition of a cap on the number of allowed units.
And may I clarify, would that be in addition to the 1,000-foot minimum distance? Would the cap be on top of that or would just be a cap on the number of units?
In addition to that, yes.
In addition.
Staying on that same item, I'd recognize Councilmember Garamella.
No, I'm okay if you guys want to put a cap with the C there.
Okay. Councilmember Fender?
I'm okay with C being there as long as the distance doesn't move any closer than 1,000 feet. I'm okay with incentivizing a mixed-use building, similar to what we have in Grace Park. I did have a question, though. How does that, like, further on in the UDO, you have the building designs about the multifamily homes need to, the facade from the outside needs to look like attached row houses and have the fourth floor setback? Would those two requirements still be required when there's retail on the bottom floor?
Yeah. So I would say, yes, only 50% of the ground floor is gonna be retail, but the back half would still probably be some kind of multifamily. The townhouse requirement would be mostly for the apartment The townhouse requirement would be mostly for the apartment building itself. The commercial part of the building, I expect to look a little different. But if we remember the same, that same series, every, every apartment that's on the ground floor has to have some kind of stupor porch in addition to a sidewalk coming off to the, to the adjacent streets or parks. The same requirement applies to commercial sites. So they're still going to have to have that sidewalk coming off. But I would expect the, the ground floor where there's, Starbucks or something, it's going to look a little different. It's not going to resemble just like, like a brownstone or a, or a, you know, urban-style row house or something like that. So.
We've heard from everybody. I'll, Mayor Pretend.
So I hear what Councilmember Rao is saying about a cap on the number of units. Because I'd like to do that, too, quite frankly, but I, I just am not comfortable with figuring out a way to do that that makes sense. And clearly, our staff's not comfortable either, because Chris said that, that was one of your least, that was your least preferred option. So I, I am, I am struggling with this. And remind me, Chris, again, let's go back to the beginning.
All right.
C didn't exist, or, I'm sorry, C existed. We, we've made so many iterations that I want to make sure what we started out with. We started out with 1,500 feet between apartment units. And yet, C said something, and just let me say it, and then you can tell me if I remember it right or not. And C said something like, if you had vertical mixed-use, there was no distance limit. Am I remembering that all correctly?
It was, if you had vertical mixed-use and, I think, at least half your parking was structured parking, then it was no.
Got it.
And that was at the bottom of a, of a more incentive-style structure rather than a mandate structure, which we'd ended up at.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. That's important. Okay. So we've made lots of changes over the last couple of months, and changes that I'm, I'm fine with to this point, but we've made, we've made it a little more difficult and a little harder and a little more expensive. And again, I'm fine with that, too. Where, where I, I'm a little bit worried, because this is happening right now, there are property owners that have rights out there that can do something that would not meet this vision at all, and actually would put a major wrench in this vision. And I, and that's happening right now, so it, I'm not making up, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making up stories or worried about something that doesn't exist right now and that we're dealing with. So that has me deeply concerned, that if we make this so unbearable, that, that we will fall into that, that problem again. So anyhow, so that, that is weighing on me. Also, I said, you know, and I'm going to repeat again, I did not want residential out here in this area at all. Residential was not my vision for this area. I had a very different take. I, I was interested in highest and best use, but that did not include residential. That's not where we're at. So now, for me, it's how do we make this successful and really make this vision come to fruition? And as I said at our last meeting, I'm fine, I was fine with the C, but as long as it had some limitations, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with allowing it without limitations. So I appreciate the, but shall not be closer than 1,000 feet. And I think that is a, that is a compromise, because there are several on this council that feel strongly about this, and, and I get it. And I know why they feel strongly. And, and I think that's a compromise I can, I can live with. If that helps.
I think, I think so.
Okay. Everyone's had a chance to comment. We'll do a second round of comments. Councilmember Abadi, please.
The only concern I have with the part, with the cap on the number of apartments is that, I mean, I, you know, I'd like as few apartments there as possible, obviously. I think we all would. But the, the problem with the cap on the number of apartments is I'm concerned that we would be missing out on an opportunity to put some affordable housing in this area. And because I think that if you, I mean, we can't, I don't think we can do both. I don't think we can limit the number of apartments and limit the distance, be, be prescriptive about the distance. So I think we would have to pick one or the other. Like I said, my preference would be to eliminate option C, but I guess if, I just don't think there's that much difference between 1,000 feet and 1,500 feet. Like what, I don't, I don't really see the difference. Like, letting, letting a developer put a, put a building 500 feet closer, I don't really understand, and maybe you can explain it to me, how that's exactly going to affect the, the dynamic of the area. I mean, I understand that it will allow more apartments, that I get, but I don't understand why the 1,500 feet, frankly, is such a big deal over 1,000 feet.
So I, I think I understand your question. The, the way I would foresee this, at least in the next, you know, two, three, four years, is that the, the letter A is going to be the first one occupied. So we're, we're going to get, or we, I guess, the town on McCrimmon's, what's going to be built is those, those multifamily dwelling, just apartment complexes. And that's going to take up the 1,500 feet. The real way I see C being utilized is once all of the highest and best pieces of land for multifamily are taken, and there is that spot that still has some kind of developability for multifamily, for a, or if we just get a, a developer who's very interested in vertical mixed-use, that will be when this is utilized. But I do not see, I do not foresee this, that letter C being used over the next, you know, few years as McCrimmon really starts to be built. It's going to be later on when, you know, again, all the, all the highest and best uses for the multifamily sites are taken. That's, and there's a, there's a, not a scrap, but there's a piece of land left that is, you know, eligible to be built. That will be when that is used. I don't, I don't believe the first few apartment complexes are going to utilize C. So really, through my view of this, this, the C, and, and again, when I, when I started as I first proposed it, it was no, no minimum distance at all, because I, I don't think this is going to be the preferred option. Is there a big difference between 1,500 and 1,000? Not, not a ton, but it, it leaves that possibility for one or, one or two other sites which could be developed with some kind of residential use. It's almost going to be a true mixed-use or, or more of a commercial development with some multifamily on the top.
Couldn't we handle that with some type of zoning variance, if it comes up? Like, I don't, I just don't like it being there in the code, that they can do it, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes in with, you know, more apartments that they're squeezing in between two other apartment buildings, and we're stuck and we can't do anything about it.
Yeah. So it, it wouldn't be necessarily a variance. That, that, those are for specific hardships, if you've got a funny-shaped piece of property or something like that. But we could always suggest to developers, they come in before Town Council with a plan development, with a rezon, conditional rezoning of some kind, and we adjust it at that point. That, that is an option. At that point, though, I, the, the only thing I worry about that is, is at that point, is council then deciding who are the winners and losers specifically with every single case, and what do we get into, you know, with each person really kind of being more and more desperate to build along McCrimmon.
But there aren't going to be that many cases. I mean, at the most, you're looking at, what, three cases over the next 15 years? It's not like this is going to be, we're not going to be dealing with this every week, right?
That, that is true. I'll just note, with any conditional rezoning, staff gets a lot more than actually gets up at Town Council, so we'd be dealing with that, and we'd, we could get your direction when we first meet with developers. It, I don't know, hard to say how many cases it could be, but you're probably right, it's probably not going to be dozens. So I, I would just say from, again, this is a, that's a great question, a great decision. From a staff perspective, I always like to look at the UDO, know exactly, really, as black or white as I can get to tell a developer and to kind of know what council wants upfront. Yeah.
I'm happy with black and white 1,500 feet, so. Thank you.
And I'm next. So to echo that, I am also happy with 1,500. The difference, in my opinion, from some of the presentation you've done is that, that would be two more apartment developments. So if we're thinking 300 each, that's the difference, seeing 1,500 units and 2,100 units in this space, which would make it more vibrant, obviously. But I, I'm confident that if the market wants to have commercial on the first floor and then more commercial up top or something like that, they can do that. They can build essentially a Park West along McCrimmon, if they want. So it, it'll be as vibrant as the market wants, and I think the market will put apartments in there. But we've heard from everyone, and let's have a second.
Yeah.
From Councilmember Garamella.
I'm good with as-is, because I think we are over-engineering too much every day, you know, going up and down, up and down. We started with somewhere. Let's give the flexibility to the planning director of 1,500 to 1,000. I'm perfectly fine as-is. I think, let's not get over-prescriptive every word that we are going through.
Okay. Not seeing any other comments, I was going to summarize to that effect, essentially that the will of this council is to leave it pretty much as-is. I didn't hear a lot of support for capping. I heard a little bit. You want to, you want to comment again on that?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with as-is, but I, I, I know, I don't feel comfortable asking to have so many, the staff is not recommending, but I would prefer to have a cap of number of units on top of the way it is, for the record.
Okay. I'll recognize Councilmember Skargen-Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was told that I'm not speaking loud enough, so I want to try to speak a little louder. I believe that the multifamily standards that are outlined here tonight are, are good. I like the incentive for mixed-use in item number C. I just sense if we let, you know, everything be consistent, whether it's multifamily 100% or it's mixed-use, at 1,500, we are going to end up with all projects that are residential-only. And, and I would really like to provide a little bit of incentive to a mixed-use product. Also, I do not support a cap. I think the standards set forth in the UDO will take care of that, so that there will not be too many units. And if there is a request to add or change something, we would have a conditional rezoning or a condition requested, at which time we could negotiate.
So I guess I can ask staff, you mentioned you want to incentivize mixed-use instead of just apartments?
Through item C. Through item C. So.
But isn't it the case that you cannot have just apartments anywhere on McCrimmon anyway? Everyone has to have the 50% of first floor, no matter what?
Yeah, as long as you're adjacent, as long as the apartment's adjacent to a major thoroughfare, minor thoroughfare, thoroughfare or collector street. So the only apartments that would not have that, that vertical mixed-use along those roads would be ones that are built off of local, smaller roads. So if it's, that's farther off McCrimmon, somewhere between McCrimmon and airport in, in that area. But I would, I'm going to, I would guess that most of these complexes are going to have faced one of those streets and have to provide some sort of mixed-use.
Okay.
I just want to really give that as an option. Item C.
Understood.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, it sounds like the will of the council is to keep them as-is and not really change or have other options for C at this time. So everything in red goes through and the black just goes away completely on that slide. Does everyone, does anyone, anyone disagree with that summary? Okay. That was a, a lot of work on the part of staff, a lot of good discussion on the part of the council to get to that point. So thank you all very much. Anything else, Mr. Lawson?
I think that was everything.
Councilmember Garamella?
So this is only talking about multifamily standards. What about some office buildings around this corridor? Can they also have like a mixed-use? Like, that's what I'm trying to look at. Because we have been so focused, as I said before, on all this multifamily, and not looking beyond that.
Yeah, so I'll say the, the Activity Center zoning districts, which I think there are four total, the intent in 2013, when the UDO was installed, was that they would be a mix of uses. Has that really worked as we drive around? Not as much as I think the planners at the time had hoped, but they do allow a diversity of uses, including mixed-use buildings. This, this, what we just talked about, words, word, what am I trying to say? The, the way we wrote it here says developments which contain multifamily dwellings, instead of just saying apartment complexes or multifamily developments. So that if they contain that multifamily inside of a mixed-use development, that they still have to adhere to the spacing requirements. But other types of development can have mixed-use, say, between an office or a retail or a research lab or any number of things. Will it? I don't know. It's not mandated, but, but they are allowed to at least have that.
So in short, you're basically letting the developer decide he wants to put?
Yes.
Why would he put it if you don't tell him?
Like I said, the Activity Centers are, they, they do have a mix of uses, but I don't think they developed in a way that originally they were, they were thought of as far as, you know, we're going to get all, all kinds of mixed-use buildings. But say like Grace Park, that is in an Activity Center zoning district. So there are some examples, but it just depends. If someone wants to build a research lab and that's all they want to build, that's all they want to manage, then that's probably what they're going to build. So.
Yeah. We're being more prescriptive in the TOD, for example. We're requiring that as compared to this, which is more market-driven.
Mm-hmm.
And that was by choice. Okay? Great.
I, I think that was all I had.
Okay. Any final comments before we start entertaining motions? Okay. I entertain a motion on 2021-189-0A. And we have to read the, all the bold, is that correct?
Yeah, so the, if you remember, the 160D text amendments that were passed in July, they had some changes in the statutes, which says that council has to acknowledge the comprehensive plan and as well as state whether you find it reasonable and for what reason. I have put a reason in here for you, if you would like to change it, if you, different reason you feel, feel free to use that. But these all just say that it's because it was recommended by the town's land use plan.
Okay. So I'm, right now, it paused for a motion. I recognize Mayor Pretend.
After consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the comprehensive plans, goals, and designated future land use for the subject parcels, I find that the proposed zoning map amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it will implement the recommended land uses as called for by the town's land use plan. I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-189-0A, approving a zoning map amendment to the boundaries of Airport Overlay Zoning District, Amendment 21-0002. Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries unanimously 7-0. I entertain a motion on 2021-089-0B.
I'll make that motion.
I recognize Councilmember Fender.
After consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the comprehensive plans, goals, and designated future land use for the subject parcels, I find that the proposed zoning map amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it will implement the recommended land uses as called for by the town's land use plan. I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-189-0B, approving a zoning map amendment to rezone various parcels located along McCrimmon Parkway and Airport Boulevard from the Industrial Management Zoning District to the Business Activity Center Zoning District, Amendment 21-0003.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that also passes unanimously 7-0. I entertain a motion on 2021-189-0C. I recognize Councilmember Skargen-Johnson, please.
I think we're taking turns tonight. Yeah? Okay. Great. Okay, great. After consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the comprehensive plans, goals, and designated future land use for the subject parcels, I find the proposed zoning map amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it will implement the recommended land uses as called for by the town's land use plan. I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-189-0C approving a zoning map amendment to install the Gateway Overlay Zoning District on various parcels along McCrimmon Parkway and Airport Boulevard, amend dash 21-0004.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously seven-zero. We are now at item, I mean, ordinance 2021-189-0D. I'd entertain a motion. Councilmember Garamella, please.
After consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the comprehensive plans, goal, and designated future land use for the subject parcels, I find that the proposed zoning map amendment is reasonable and is in the public interest because it will implement the recommended land uses as called for by the town land use plans. I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-189-OD approving a zoning map amendment to rezone various parcels to the Transit Oriented Development Zoning District Amendment 21-0005.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously seven-zero.
Mayor, may I interrupt before this last one? Let's remember, there was the conversation earlier about adding pollutants to the definition of biomanufacturing, if that could be added into your motion for the text amendments.
So at the very end of, after saying amend 21-005, just say as amended?
That would be perfect. Yes, yes, thank you.
I'd entertain that motion. I'm recognizing, Councilmember Rao.
After consideration of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the comprehensive plans, goals, and designated future land use for the subject parcels, I find that the proposed text amendments are reasonable and in the public interest because they will implement the recommended land uses as called for by the town's land use plan. I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-189-0E approving text amendments to unified development ordinance related to land use plan implementation of the McCrimmon Subarea Plan A and the Transit Oriented Development Zoning District, UDO amend dash 21-0005.
Say as amended?
As amended.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously seven-zero as well. So I think we got motions and votes on all five of those, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, sir, we're finished.
Okay, um, thank you.
A one-week vacation for Chris.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to give Mr. Lawson a one-week vacation for all his hard work.
Second.
So thank you very, thank you very much to all staff for your hard work. Really appreciate it. Okay. We are now at item 9B. It's a resolution appointing advisory committee members. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will present this item, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. That's a tough presentation to follow, but I'm gonna try my best. During the recent round of electronic balloting, council made the following selections for advisory committee appointment. Let me zoom in just a little bit here. All right. Alec Johnson was selected for appointment to the Environment and Stormwater Committee, and Beverly Gold Yekesen was selected for reappointment, and one vacancy does remain on that committee. Guerme Correa in Haiti de Leon were selected for appointment to the Smart City Steering Committee. There are no more vacancies on the Smart City Steering Committee. Brian Cook was selected for appointment to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee. There are no vacancies remaining on that committee. Ranga Narasaman and Rahalani Said were selected for appointment to the Performance Measures Advisory Committee. Bizwadev Roy and John Wall were selected for reappointment, and one vacancy does remain. Chris Roebuck was selected for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, and council consensus was to leave the vacancy created by Chris Roebuck's appointment vacant until the next recruitment cycle. Shergance Ray was appointed to the Public Education Advisory Committee, and Lauren Quick Graham was reappointed. Lauren Quick Graham does represent District Four, and one vacancy for District Three does currently remain. Saraf Abbas and Kalananda Sharma were selected for appointment to the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and one vacancy remains. And Kathy Busby was selected for appointment to the Senior Advisory Committee. The remaining vacancies can be filled during the future fall, fall recruitment, which is tentatively scheduled to take place in October or November.
Okay. Any comments or questions before we take a motion to approve this? I entertain a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-281-0 of the Morrisville Town Council considering appointments of advisory committee members. Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously seven-zero. Thank you all very much. Thank you to all the applicants and the people willing to serve on our town committees. Right now, we are at future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. For a full listing, you can always see the town calendar at www.townofmorrisville.org. Our second-to-last pop-up dog park will occur this Sunday from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Please sign up online and complete your waiver. Come join the fun for your pet. The, uh, Morrisville residents are invited to take, take part in National S'mores Day. It's actually on August 10th, but in S'moresville, we'll be celebrating on Wednesday, August 11th. The town of Morrisville will change its name to become S'moresville as we honor and enjoy the delicious snacks made famous at campfires everywhere. That'll take place from 6:00 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. at Morrisville Community Park. And there is also an opportunity to participate, starting immediately in a virtual manner. Residents are asked to create a short video, one minute or less, about their personal s'mores experience, such as a fond, fond childhood camping memory or who they shared their first s'mores with, et cetera. Share the video on Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter using the hashtag #S'moresville. Either post it to the town's pages in the comments below, the S'moresville event post, or post your pages and tag the town of Morrisville. Please share your videos with us until August 11th. Top five videos will win some S'moresville swag bags. Now we are at council and manager comments, and I'm actually going first tonight. So I would first like to start by thank you to L., Local Federal Credit Union for, Local Government, Federal Credit Union for sharing with the advisory council, which I serve, on about the opportunity for free paper shredding events, and for our staff for coordinating the event with the food drive to benefit our greater Morrisville community through Dorcas Ministries, which does such great work for so many in our town and our region. I want to say congratulations to the Morrisville Cardinals Organization, the first professional minor league cricket team in our area. Their season begins on Saturday, August 7th, with the first of ten home games to be played on our own Church Street Park this season. Good luck to them and have fun. And as I'm, uh, Western Region Food Security will just be distributing free meals to any in need at Morrisville Elementary this Saturday, July 31st, from 11:30 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. And there will also be a blood donation opportunity at the farmer's market this Saturday, the 31st, as well, from 8:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. Please see my social media for the link, or the link is also donate dot thebloodconnection.org/donor/schedules/drive/underlined-schedule/175792. So if you're watching the recording, you'll have to go back and copy that down. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi for her comments.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fender, please.
I would just like to thank the Triangle Cricket League and Morrisville Cardinals for inviting us to their season kickoff last night. It was a lot of fun meeting everyone and the coaches and the owners of the Morrisville Cardinals, so just wanna thank them for having us participate in that event.
Wonderful. Councilmember Rao, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Kudos to the Cardinals, and I just have a couple. First of all, I, I just, one thing I'd like to get the staff to get us eventually is, and I'm assuming you're working on any kind of updates you can give us on the Small Business Recovery Program from the American Rescue Plan. I know that Representative Debra Ross has submitted a request for $300,000 for appropriation for Morrisville businesses, so just really excited to, I wanna thank her for doing that, and hopefully we can, we can get moving on helping businesses. Real quickly, I wanna congratulate Chris Salter from our Fire Department for receiving the firefighter of the year at the Chamber First Responders Event, and also Zachary Grady, Officer Zachary Grady, detective for our department, for receiving Police Officer of the Year. And a special kudos to Anthony Blackman, CEO of Atlantic Tire, who just received the Order of the Longleaf Pine, and he does so much work for our community. In, in following that, I wanna thank him and the team there for hosting with the town of Cary the first, well, the ATP Men's 50K Challenger Event, and it was great to see Indian Davis Cup player Ram Ramanathan from Chennai, India, reach the finals of this tournament. Quite exciting. So looking forward to another event in September. And finally, National Parents' Day was on Sunday, and Mayor Portem Johnson and I were at Cedar Forest Community Center. I wanna thank Sharon Pace and Beverly Yekesen for organizing that event. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mayor Portem Johnson.
Almost everything's been said, but I too wanna thank our staff for all their hard work this past weekend on the Public Works Food Drive and the shredding event. Also wanna say congratulations to the Morrisville Cardinal Cricket Team for their event last night and the awarding, not awarding, but the distribution of their shirts. And then lastly, I'm a week late, but I wanna make sure to recognize our Muslim friends and family. Eid was a week ago tonight, and of course, we had a work session a week ago, but we, we don't do comments, so I wanna make sure to say happy Eid. Eid Mubarak to all of our Muslim residents.
Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, as everything has been said, yes, I missed the event for the Marshall Cardinals yesterday, but I will catch up with them. But I had a question, Martha, or Brandon, uh, Breckenridge residents, like, you know, the board attended the public safety meeting for Gray Marble, and there is an issue with the amount of trucks and which are parked on public roads. We don't have an ordinance today, which is very loosely written, that does not allow, you know, heavy trucks to be parked on residential roads. I, the last I heard from the police chief was she's going to talk to all the departments and come up with a comprehensive plan of action. Has any traction on that because people are complaining a lot with having trucks and then cars for visibility? I just wanted to know if anything has been getting brought?
Yeah, we'll, we'll follow up with you. Thank you.
This time I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to everyone that was newly appointed and those that were reappointed to our citizens advisory committees. The citizen advisory committees are very important to our town because it's your voice that is heard the loudest, I guess, as you get closer to the town staff and ultimately the, the leadership here. We really rely on hearing your voice to help us assess what the decisions are for the town. Without that, we would not be as strong of a town and, and number one in the nation as we recently were awarded national awards. So I encourage you, if you weren't appointed in this cycle, to please apply in the fall. And we do have another alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Board that we purposely did not appoint tonight because we want everyone to think about it very strongly about what they would like to do, including serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. So it's just one of my favorite committees. The other item I'd like to stress is that S'moresville is a wonderful annual and unique event to our town, and it is held this year on August 11th because there's a town council meeting on August 10th, and we would like to participate along with you. So every year, we kinda switch it up. One year, we actually had Hershey's come out and do a fun event alongside our celebration, but this year, we are just going to have the event at the community park. So that's important that everybody knows that it's not all over town like it was in years past, that we're just doing it in one location. And we'll emphasize that in the promotion as we get closer to that time. The other exciting, fun, family event next month will be the wet-down ceremony with our new red ladder truck, and that will be August 21st. Fire trucks are one of my favorite pieces of equipment for the town, and I know the whole council had an opportunity to see it up close just a couple meetings ago, so we're really excited to be sharing that with all of you. And then finally, I do have a question to staff. National Night Out is typically done in August or October, and with COVID and everything, I wasn't sure if, if there was sufficient time to plan, if we were gonna hold an event. I know Fire Safety Day is going to be held in early October this year, but are there any plans for National Night Out?
Chief Anders is planning for October.
Okay, great, great. Because there's other local municipalities that are planning in August, and I didn't want anybody to get confused, so that's really helpful. Thank you. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to circle back to Councilmember Rao, who might have had a comment.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I forgot to mention it. I did want a logistical to report an incident that happened yesterday. Yesterday at approximately 1:00, I was with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, and there was approximately a thousand granite rocks on the exit, 285 exit, and I blew out a tire. And it was a very dangerous situation. Eventually, they cleared it out, but I just wanted to alert the public out there, I don't know the, the truck, whether they found what happened. I wanna thank my colleague who stayed with me until the entire time. We waited for AAA for like an hour and a half, and then her husband came, and, but thank you so much. But it was just very scary, and there was a lot of cars there with flat tires, and we pulled out the road and everything, and so I just don't know when something like that happens, you know, are our police force notified as well? I think DOT eventually came and cleaned it up, but it just, you know, was like in the middle of the day, so I just wanted to bring that up, so, thank you.
If I could add?
Please, please.
So what had happened is there was like these large rocks that were jagged. They're like used for crushed foundation, but they weren't pebble-sized, they were actually softball-sized, and they pierced the car tire pretty well. They were like evenly laid across the exit ramp, which means there was a large truck carrying rock that was too full. Multiple cars were affected. The first thing that I did was call 911, as all of you should, if you're ever in a situation like this, to contact first responders, to one for your personal safety, but the safety of others. And it was only like 94 degrees, and it was very warm, but we had excellent service by the State Patrol officer that assisted us. Morrisville didn't come out because it was near the exit. It was near off a freeway ramp, and they have jurisdiction over that. So we were, I guess you would say, educated on, you know, jurisdictional requirements and so forth, but it was very scary in the sense that we were at risk. We were on the side of the road with a very busy trafficway, so everyone kept their... We were on the side of the road with a very busy trafficway, so everyone kept their, you know, cool and everything, but I can't imagine being there at night or anything like that, but just to see construction debris in such a way that there was no way to avoid it. I'm reminded that we're doing road construction every day on Morrisville Carpenter Road. I know that we're doing home construction everywhere, and all of these kind of trucks and vehicles could have debris that could spill and ultimately affect the safety for everyone. But we were both safe, and so were the other affected motorists, and it's just a reminder of how quick things can change, but you just have to keep your cool and keep communicating. So, thank you.
Okay. Great. Glad everyone is safe and calling 911. The correct people will always be dispatched, so that's pretty important.
I just let them decide who was who and, you know, kept, stayed with the vehicle.
I was with the right person during a crisis.
Town Manager Page, anything from staff?
Just one quick one. We've been trying to keep you updated on Smart Shuttle. Our proposed launch date has been firmed up as October 2nd, and we will fill you in in more details, but one did want to give you that date, October 2nd.
That's Gandhi's birthday.
I'm sorry?
That's Mahatma Gandhi's birthday.
I can't hear you.
No, I said October 2nd is Mahatma Gandhi's birthday.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds like a marketing tie-in somehow. Excellent. Thank you very much. Now, we are at council and manager comments, and I'm actually going first tonight, so I would first like to start by thanking you to L., Local Federal Credit Union, for local government, federal credit union, for sharing with the advisory council, which I serve, on about the opportunity for free paper shredding events, and for our staff for coordinating the event with the food drive to benefit our greater Morrisville community through Dorcas Ministries, which does such great work for so many in our town and our region. I want to say congratulations to the Morrisville Cardinals organization, the first professional minor league cricket team in our area. Their season begins on Saturday, August 7th, with the first of 10 home games to be played on our own Church Street Park this season. Good luck to them and have fun. And as I'm in... Western Region Food Security will be distributing free meals to any in need at Morrisville Elementary this Saturday, July 31st, from 11:30 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. And there will also be a blood donation opportunity at the farmer's market this Saturday, the 31st, as well, from 8:30 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. Please see my social media for the link, or the link is also donate.thebloodconnection.org/donor/schedules-drive/175792. So if you're watching the recording, you'll have to go back and copy that down. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi for her comments.
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fender, please.
I would just like to thank the Triangle Cricket League and Morrisville Cardinals for inviting us to their season kickoff last night. It was a lot of fun meeting everyone and the coaches and the owners of the Morrisville Cardinals, so just want to thank them for having us participate in that event.
Wonderful. Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos to the Cardinals, and I just have a couple. First of all, I just, one thing I'd like to get the staff to get us eventually is, and I'm assuming you're working on any kind of updates you can give us on the Small Business Recovery Program from the American Rescue Plan. I know that Representative Debra Ross has submitted a request for $300,000 for appropriation for Morrisville businesses, so just really excited to, I want to thank her for doing that, and hopefully we can, we can get moving on helping businesses. Real quickly, I want to congratulate Chris Salter from our Fire Department for receiving the firefighter of the year at the Chamber First Responders Event, and also Zachary Grady, Officer Zachary Grady Detective, for our department, for receiving Police Officer of the Year. And a special kudos to Anthony Blackman, CEO of Atlantic Tire, who just received the Order of the Longleaf Pine, and he does so much work for our community. In following that, I want to thank him and the team there for hosting, with the town of Cary, the first, well, the ATP Men's 50K Challenger Event, and it was great to see Indian Davis Cup player Ram Ramanathan from Chennai, India, reach the finals of this tournament. Quite exciting. So looking forward to another event in September. And finally, National Parents' Day was on Sunday, and Mayor Portem Johnson and I were at Cedar Falls Community Center. I want to thank Sharon Pace and Beverly Yekason for organizing that event. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mayor Portem Johnson.
Almost everything's been said, but I too want to thank our staff for all their hard work this past weekend on the Public Works Food Drive and the shredding event. Also want to say congratulations to the Morrisville Cardinal Cricket Team for their event last night and the awarding, not awarding, but the distribution of their shirts. And then lastly, I'm a week late, but I want to make sure to recognize our Muslim friends and family. Eid was a week ago tonight, and of course, we had a work session a week ago, but we don't do comments, so I want to make sure to say happy Eid. Eid Mubarak to all of our Muslim residents.
Councilmember Caramella.
Yeah, as everything has been said, yes, I missed the event for the Marshall Cardinals yesterday, but I will catch up with them. But I had a question, Martha or Brandon. Breckenridge Residence, like, you know, the board attended the public safety meeting for gray marble, and there is an issue with the amount of trucks and which are parked on public roads. We don't have an ordinance today, which is very loosely written, that does not allow, you know, heavy trucks to be parked on residential roads. The last I heard from the police chief was she's going to talk to all the departments and come up with a comprehensive plan of action. Has any traction on that, because people are complaining a lot with having trucks and then cars for visibility? I just wanted to know if anything has been getting worked.
Yeah, we'll follow up with you. Thank you.
Okay. What's the follow-up for the truck thing?
This time, I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to everyone that was newly appointed and those that were reappointed to our citizens advisory committees. The citizen advisory committees are very important to our town because it's your voice that is heard the loudest, I guess, as you get closer to the town staff and ultimately the leadership here. We really rely on hearing your voice to help us assess what the decisions are for the town. Without that, we would not be as strong of a town and number one in the nation as we recently were awarded national award. So I encourage you, if you weren't appointed in this cycle, to please apply in the fall. And we do have another alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Board that we purposely did not appoint tonight because we want everyone to think about it very strongly about what they would like to do, including serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. So it's just one of my favorite committees. The other item I'd like to stress is that S'moresville is a wonderful annual and unique event to our town, and it is held this year on August 11th because there's a town council meeting on August 10th, and we would like to participate along with you. So every year, we kind of switch it up. One year, we actually had Hershey's come out and do a fun event alongside our celebration, but this year, we are just going to have the event at the community park. So that's important that everybody knows that it's not all over town like it was in years past, that we're just doing it in one location. And we'll emphasize that in the promotion as we get closer to that time. The other exciting, fun, family event next month will be the wet-down ceremony with our new red ladder truck, and that will be August 21st. Fire trucks are one of my favorite pieces of equipment for the town, and I know the whole council had an opportunity to see it up close just a couple of meetings ago, so we're really excited to be sharing that with all of you. And then finally, I do have a question to staff. National Night Out is typically done in August or October, and with COVID and everything, I wasn't sure if there was sufficient time to plan if we were going to hold an event. I know Fire Safety Day is going to be held in early October this year, but are there any plans for National Night Out?
Chief Anders is planning for October.
Okay. Great. Great. Because there's other local municipalities that are planning in August, and I didn't want anybody to get confused, so that's really helpful. Thank you. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to circle back to Councilmember Rao, who might have had a comment.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Mayor. Forgot to mention it. I did want a logistical to report an incident that happened yesterday. Yesterday, at approximately 1:00, I was with Councilmember Scroggins Johnson, and there was approximately 1,000 granite rocks on the exit 285 exit, and I blew out a tire. And it was a very dangerous situation. Eventually, they cleared it out, but I just wanted to alert the public out there. I don't know the truck, whether they found what happened. I want to thank my colleague who stayed with me until the entire time. We waited for AAA for like an hour and a half, and then her husband came, but thank you so much. But it was just very scary, and there was a lot of cars there with flat tires, and we pulled out the road and everything, and so I just don't know when something like that happens, you know, are our police force notified as well? I think DOT eventually came and cleaned it up, but it just, you know, was like in the middle of the day, so I just wanted to bring that up. So, thank you.
If I could add...
Please, please.
So what had happened is there was like these large rocks that were jagged. They're like used for crushed foundation, but they weren't pebble-sized, they were actually softball-sized, and they pierced the car tire pretty well. They were like evenly laid across the exit ramp, which means there was a large truck carrying rock that was too full. Multiple cars were affected. The first thing that I did was call 911, as all of you should, if you're ever in a situation like this, to contact first responders, to one for your personal safety, but the safety of others. And it was only like 94 degrees, and it was very warm, but we had excellent service by the State Patrol officer that assisted us. Morrisville didn't come out because it was near the exit. It was near off a freeway ramp, and they have jurisdiction over that. So we were, I guess you would say, educated on, you know, jurisdictional requirements and so forth, but it was very scary in the sense that we were at risk. We were on the side of the road with a very busy trafficway, so everyone kept their, you know, cool and everything, but I can't imagine being there at night or anything like that, but just to see construction debris in such a way that there was no way to avoid it. I'm reminded that we're doing road construction every day on Morrisville Carpenter Road. I know that we're doing home construction everywhere, and all of these kind of trucks and vehicles could have debris that could spill and ultimately affect the safety for everyone. But we were both safe, and so were the other affected motorists, and it's just a reminder of how quick things can change, but you just have to keep your cool and keep communicating. So, thank you.
Okay. Great. Glad everyone is safe and calling 911. The correct people will always be dispatched, so that's pretty important.
I just let them decide who was who and, you know, kept, stayed with the vehicle.
I was with the right person during a crisis.
Town Manager Page, anything from staff?
Just one quick one. We've been trying to keep you updated on Smart Shuttle. Our proposed launch date has been firmed up as October 2nd, and we will fill you in in more details, but one did want to give you that date, October 2nd.
That's Gandhi's birthday.
I'm sorry?
That's Mahatma Gandhi's birthday.
I can't hear you.
No, I said October 2nd is Mahatma Gandhi's birthday.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds like a marketing tie-in somehow. Excellent. Thank you very much.